All right, let's go. Good evening. My name is Keith Ramano. All this meeting, this is in the Westland Commission meeting for Tom Monroe. It is October 28th, 2020, and the time is 7:01 PM. I'll take a roll call of members of the commission, staff present during tonight's remote meeting. Please answer here present, starting with myself, Keith Ramano. Lois Spencer is our vice chair and secretary. Jim Stewart, who is a licensed surveyor and engineer in the state of Connecticut, and also our treasurer. Here. Okay. Clark Gingras. Here. Ross Mastaraco.
Here.
E.J. Hall.
Here.
Denise Hollstead.
Agent. Here.
Donna Suzinski, our office manager.
Present.
Your Strata recording secretary. And Barbara Schellenberg, who is our counsel. All here. Okay, before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how this meeting will proceed. The object and purpose of the inland will let this commission's ride for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within an item room. Meeting procedure, in the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications, protocol for public hearing. An applicant may make a presentation to the commission during which, after which, the commission will be asking the applicant. Question, due to remote meeting status, I'd like to ask the applicant to keep the presentations concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I ask that all comments you made through the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, please keep comments and questions direct and at a time limit of three minutes maybe imposed. Not necessarily that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions, new materials entered in this seven minutes of testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con to the inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting files are public to generate unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Denise, did you have something that you wanted to add?
There we go. I wasn't, I was muted. Um, I sent everybody the information about 536 Monroe Turnpike, about the gas station, just the change.
Yep.
The other thing that I should note is that the town Monroe email was down all day today. Um, I just recently got some emails this evening at six o'clock. Um, because I have been working remotely from home. So if there was correspondence today, we may not have received it for anybody who's sitting in on this meeting. And just to let the commission know.
All right, um, a couple of things we're going to do differently tonight. Um, first. Is, um, this me, this, this meeting or myself going to be, um, over by nine thirty tonight. Um, we're not doing four hours. No way. It's not, it's not, it's not necessary. So I'm expecting one commissioner to make a motion at about nine twenty-eight to close the meeting, no matter where we are. Or I will just log off in nine thirty. If you want, if you like. But this ain't going to eleven. I'm putting a, putting a timeline. I think we've all worked. It overworked, you know, every two weeks, and we gotta have some reasonable expectation. How much we're gonna do it tonight. Um, first of all, then the next thing. Is we're gonna start tonight with the actual, um, uh, sixty-four or IWC twenty twenty dash zero three R sixty-four Cambridge Drive with the intervenor. Then after that, we're gonna do the third-party consultant and, and decide, hopefully decide on one of those proposals. Um, if there's time left, which may out, we'll be able to get to the applicant's rebuttal. But between picking our third-party consultant, if we have time, I like to, uh, address the rest of the agenda. But before we go forward this, Denise, is there anything that's time-sensitive on the agenda tonight? That if it's just so happens that the first application runs us. That we should address.
Um, there are two, the only thing that you really should address are the application determinations that were tabled last, at the last meeting. It's for three whitetail drive and one sixty-nine enterprise drive. Those just need to be decided. You, you did receive that information. So now the, just the determination of what type of review, whether it's a public hearing or a regular review, that's all you have to do on those. Uh, everything else, I think is okay. I don't think. We have a definitive.
I would love to get the NOV discussions done because we've been carting them for so long.
Which ones are these?
Um, under enforcement, we've got thirteen eighty Monroe Turnpike, forty-three Bird's Eye, and thirteen sixty-six Monroe.
The thirteen sixty-six and thirteen eighty are the related to properties next to each other, right?
Correct.
So are you saying?
Well, actually, all three of them are, are next to one another.
Oh, the whole three, okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. You know, we have. This is a time, this application, the other application is time-sensitive. We need to get through this.
Just, I want you to know, because I do see people, representatives of ON, so just.
Well, hopefully, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, and I have, I don't see Mr. Green's, uh, name up here yet. But I'm gonna request that he gets his thing done in an hour. But we'll get to that in a minute. Um, but let's, I think. I need the app hearing. We could probably move through that pretty quickly. So let's, let's take a stab at that, start with that. Oh, wait, hold on. Just one thing. All right, I missed the public participation. Let me just hit that out. At this point, uh, in meeting, if anybody in the public has anything to say of a general nature or question to the commission of a general nature, uh, anything. Particular, uh, now's the time to speak up. And say something.
Good evening, committee. Uh, my name is Caesar Rios. I, um, here in regards my property five five six Paper Street.
Yep. Go ahead.
Is, is, uh, this application will be taken care of tonight also. Uh, I didn't hear you mention.
We don't, we don't know yet. We have something that's, uh, we have to prioritize. And we have something, um, that we need to address. We're hoping to get to the other business tonight. But, um, unfortunately, I can't give you an answer one way or the other at this point.
Um, okay. Um. I think, um, I have to, uh, apologize. I wanted to say this. I have to apologize. I get late to meeting my new drawings. Uh, that my engineer, uh, provided me just, uh, this morning. And I, um, drop off, uh, to Mrs. Hollstead, uh, this morning. Um, I don't, I don't know, and I don't think you all have that and maybe not review.
Mr. Rios, I appreciate you giving us this information, but we really have to try to get a lot of stuff covered tonight. So if we get down to your, to your application, we'll, we'll bring this conversation back, okay?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, where was I, um, before? Okay, we want to do the, um, is here in determinations? We'll do that, um, IWC. Uh, twenty twenty dash zero seven, three whitetail drives.
Did you say three whitetail, Keith?
Yes.
You dropped out. Um, okay. I move that we bring this to a regular meeting in that most, almost all of the activity is outside of the upland review area.
Okay. We have a motion to, uh, to move, uh, application IWC twenty twenty seven to a regular meeting. Second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, IWC twenty twenty five zero eight, one sixty-nine Enterprise Drive, Commercial Stone Processing, Parking, Grading, Public and Septic. I'm sorry. Have a. Anybody have any ideas on this one?
I have a question for Denise before we, we decide. Denise, were there any violations on this property that we have to address too?
Um, this was the one that we, well, they had it in the planning, but this was one that we had, um, in front of you. About, about a month ago, um, because the property is being sold and the current renter. Is kind of a construction yard, so they're trying to incorporate and fix that while the, with the application as well.
Okay, so that we don't have any, outstanding violations on it. It's, it's not up for need.
No, we, we brought them in because it was activity in the upland review because of the, uh, the person who's renting the property.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Um, yep.
Having trouble figuring out what, what on this application. I'm thinking, um. Anybody else have any feelings on this?
Ready? Was it the same? I, I didn't get a chance to look into that one. Was there any same thing? No, no, no activity in upland interview area?
Oh, no, there's lots of activity within the upland review area.
I make a motion, uh, to bring this to a public hearing.
Got a motion.
Significant, significant work in the upland review area.
We have a second? Again, from Chris Spence. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Application IWC point point that's zero eight to. Spring. All right, now we'll be looking for, uh, the intervenors for, well, I'm sorry, let me say that differently. We're gonna go to application. IWC point point that's zero three R sixty-four Cambridge for Independence Site Development and Restoration. Looking for, uh, Mr. Green. Looking for anybody else associated with Mr. Green.
I do see him on. He's listed. But he's muted.
Oh, there he is. All right.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Um, okay, you guys are prepared now, correct?
Uh. We are prepared to make a presentation, um, tonight, um, in support of our intervention and frankly, in support of retaining consultants. Uh, with respect to the application, um, there is a bit of a wrinkle. We are prepared to proceed, but unfortunately, I learned today. That, uh, George Logan's mother just died, and he cannot be available. He is, um, has been introduced, um, in the past. He is a consultant of ours. He's a Rema Ecological Services, and he informed me today of the passing of his mother and his, um, lack of availability, um, this evening. So we are prepared to proceed, um, as best we can, uh, but.
Couple of questions. Who's going to be speaking from your, from your group, your team tonight?
I will be speaking, and Dave Bjorkland of STH Bjorkland Engineering will be speaking, and Evan Glass of Alta Environmental will be speaking.
Okay, you think that, um. You could probably wrap this up in an hour uninterrupted?
Uh, our presentation within an hour?
Yeah, you tell, just give me a rough idea how long you think, because if it's gonna be too long, we might have to break it up into two parts.
Um, I think that, uh, we'll certainly, um, do our best. Obviously, we will need, uh, some time, um, going forward. Because, uh, Mr. Logan does have some information that's critical, uh, to share with the commission. Uh, however. We'll certainly give it a try.
Okay, well, we're, we're, we're prepared tonight to make some, make a lot, you know, to move this thing forward. And we're giving you the opportunity to, uh, present before we make. Um, just to remind everybody, this will be their time without comment or interruption. If someone decides that they want to interrupt, I will instruct, uh, Donna to mute them. So, uh, Mr. Green, your team now has, hopefully, um, hour. And go ahead.
If, uh, you'll just bear with me for one moment. I am, uh. Going to forward an email to, uh, Ms. Suzinski and to the town attorney that's relevant to our, uh. Application, uh, copy of attorney.
Mr. Green, just remember what you're do, what's important tonight is that you present to the commissioners what you have. So that's what, that's what we're all sitting here waiting for, okay?
Yep. I'm just hitting the send key, Mr. Chair. And we're set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, um, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the offices of Green and Gross. Um, and I appear for the commission this evening on behalf of, uh, Peter Metropolis. Uh, the trustee and owns property, um, consisting of some, um, one hundred and forty-four acres of property that is adjacent to this subject property. Um, I kinda first want to thank the commission for. I know that this has been a, a really long slog and, uh, but certainly as the commission recognizes from having viewed this site. This is a, uh, a really significant project. I want to reiterate my comments to the commission, um, in the past, that, uh. Uh, this application really, uh, involves and addresses conduct that has occurred over the past fourteen years. And, uh, obviously, as the commission recognizes, based on the massive hole in the earth that exists at sixty-four, uh, Cambridge and Four Independence. Uh, I, I think this may be, maybe involves one of the largest, what I'll call the remedial project in the history of the town. Uh, so it's not surprising to me that it, that it took this long for us to get here. Um, I also want to point out, and I find it interesting that, uh, I heard, uh. Uh, I've heard commissioners comment as I sit and wait for these hearings to begin, and we listen to other matters, that, um, this commission has significant concerns. With sites that, uh, have violations on them. And where the applicant files, uh, uh, applications for permit that don't, uh, that really don't necessarily initially address the violation. And I think I heard that as recently as the last meeting, um, a comment by one of the commissioners, uh, referring to the fact that it is a policy not to, uh, sort of allow development. Uh, and, uh, an application for a permit where a violation exists. And I believe there was a principle expressed about addressing, uh, the violation squarely initially. And, um, I think I, I begin here because obviously, there is still a significant, uh, violation existing on the site. At this hearing and frankly, at other hearings, including, uh, the appeal to the ZBA, the applicant recognizes that, um, its conduct. Or the present condition of the site, whether it's the conduct of this applicant or its predecessor entitled. Um, far exceeds anything that was ever permitted for this site. And, uh, that's, that's not insignificant as this, uh, as this commission, um, considers this application. We've also, um, I think from the beginning, uh, my, the intervener has urged this commission. Um, to, uh, request and require additional information from the applicant. Uh, the applicant has repeatedly indicated that it would provide, uh, information, but it has only been in, really in fits and starts. Uh, I heard, uh, for example, the applicant suggests that they had readily allowed a site visit when the reality was that it took nearly four months to, uh, finally get on the site. Despite the fact that on the initial night that we had filed our petition to an agreement, I had indicated that my clients would like a site visit. In order to really make a full and fair presentation to the commission. Obviously, that did not happen, uh, until September. But, uh, be that as it may, uh, we did, uh, finally get on the site. Um, my client has also specified, um, information, um, that it has, uh, that it is requesting. We did, at the applicant's request, provide, uh, written letters specifying the information that we were requesting. Um. Um, in order to really assess both, uh, the existing condition of this site, as well as to develop a response to the proposed, uh, sort of remedial permit, I will call it, that the, uh, applicant proposes here. Uh, much of that information has frankly, still not be, uh, been provided. Uh, most recently, I note that the applicant had indicated at the last hearing that, uh, the applicant had had a hydrogeologist to work on the site. They had gotten positive results. They look forward to, um, sharing those results. And I don't know, um, what has occurred recently, uh, but I can say that, uh. As an attorney for the intervener and, um, as a party who is to receive, um, copies of all information submitted to the commission, I'm not aware of the submission by the applicant of any of that information as I sit here today. Um, so, uh. Um, finally, uh, I became aware, uh, from a conversation with the town attorney today, uh, that, uh, council for the applicant has challenged the substance of our, uh, notice of intervention. I have accordingly, and I learned about that, uh, midday today. And, uh, well, I had, uh, a pretty full schedule today and, uh, other meetings, uh, that involved other applications. Uh, I did just, and just by way of explanation, um, my hesitation at opening the, uh, opening my presentation was so that I could send an email. Um, to the commission, which I sent to Ms. Suzinski. I copied, uh, Attorney Schellenberg and Attorney Finn. And, um, I have, uh, on behalf of the intervener, I have filed a, an amended, uh, notice of intervention. Uh, and again, I did not, uh, become aware of any challenge to the substance of our petition, which was filed, um, in May. Uh, until, uh, from the mid, middle of the day today, um, we have amended the intervention. It has been signed and verified by my client in California. Um, and we did, I did just email it to Attorney Schellenberg. Um, I think that, um, Attorney Finn was questioning the.
Attorney Green, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, um, but I just noticed from the meme, email, I saw a memorandum of law. I did not actually see an amended petition. So perhaps, um. You just neglected to attach that, unless I'm missing something. I just want to note that for the record.
Okay, I'm actually, I have something to say to you, uh, Attorney Green. You've been talking for almost ten minutes now. You actually do have the floor you are presenting tonight, and you have not given us anything yet that we could use to help us with this hearing. So if you could, you know, you can cut through the, uh, fat, please, and maybe get to the meat of the stuff that we really want to hear. All right, just, just letting you know.
Joel, perhaps I should go first then?
That, well, I think, uh, what I would like to do first.
Mr. Green has, Mr. Green is, is the lead of your team. So, Mr. Green, who's gonna speak? But us commissioners are sitting here waiting to something we get for the nuts and bolts, you know, we want to, what we can sink our teeth into. So if, if you're, hopefully, you're, you're done with your opening present, you know, presentation, we can get to some stuff that is gonna be helpful. And I, no, no disrespect whatsoever. I'm sure my commission would feel like I have the same thing.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I appreciate your, uh, frustration and your need to move this forward. Um, I do, however, need to make a record, and I did, uh, forward the amended notice. I hope Attorney Schellenberg has received it. But without any further, uh, delay, I am, um, I would like to call on Dave Bjorkland. And, um, if I can, um, have a sort of control of the screen here, I can, uh, I think I can, uh, put up exhibits that, uh, uh, Mr. Bjorkland will need as part of his, uh, presentation. So, uh, with that, I'll introduce, uh, Dave Bjorkland, who I know, uh, the commission is, uh, familiar with. He is, uh, the, uh, lead engineer at, uh, STH Bjorkland. And, uh, Dave, why don't you, uh. You can first, uh, I think, just briefly, uh, describe your, uh, qualifications for the commission, just so that we have a record.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Dave Bjorkland. I'm president of the firm, STH Bjorkland Associates. And I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. Uh, I am very familiar with the subject property. Uh, I first was on the property, uh, long before there was any activity on the property. I believe it was in nineteen ninety, and I have been very familiar with the piece of property, uh, since that time. Uh, what I wanted to do, uh, was to walk the commission through some history of the property, not going back to, uh, oh six, but starting in, uh, two thousand thirteen. Uh, because when we all had a chance to tour the property, the property, uh, looked a lot different than it has over a period of time, starting in oh seven, oh eight, and moving forward. There has been a lot of activity on the property, uh, that has now been covered up, smoothed over, filled in. Uh, and except for the very north end of the property, just walking it, you would have a difficult time, uh, looking at what the history of the property has been. Uh, and so what I wanted to do was to point out, uh, how the property has, uh, progressed, uh, since thirteen. I think this information will be very important to, uh, subsequent future investigations, uh, that will be done, uh, by the, the hydrogeologists, just that, uh, the commission picks to, uh, examine the site. Are you, Joel, are you gonna put up the first? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move through these quickly. Uh, this is, uh, and these photos are, uh, everything that you're gonna view tonight is from Google Earth, except for. Google Earth, except for the very last photo, which is a satellite photo, a very recent satellite photo. What this depicts is the, an excavation area shown in September '13. Keep in mind, Google Earth photos are, are not always current, so this was sometime before that, that was posted on their site. But here we are, we're, we're nowhere near the north end of the site, where everybody saw the very large and deep excavation. And what you, what this depicts is an existing excavation below the groundwater table and a larger excavation just north of it, which had not reached the groundwater table at that point in time. We can move on to 2014. Again, we still have the excavation below the groundwater table, and the excavation to the north has moved forward. And the point is, is that when you go out and you look at the site today, you see no evidence of this work being done. Moving on to 2015, we still have the excavation below the water table in the same area, but you can see that proceeding in a northwesterly direction. We now have a new excavation that is clearly, according to the photo, below the water table. Moving on to '16, we have, still have the two prior excavations that were below the water table, and the excavation continues northerly. They're opening up a much larger area. 2017, up in the northwest corner of the property, just below the detention area that anybody who went on the field walk noted, we have a new excavation in that area that's below the water table. And if you look at the south end of the site, those two excavations below the water table that we had been viewing previously, they have disappeared. They have been filled in. Moving on to '18, we have a new excavation below the water table. That excavation has grown in size considerably. There is some evidence that they're below the water table, just to the, sort of to the north, northeast of that. We didn't note that area. And as I said, the previous excavation from 213, 2013 to 2016, has been completely filled in, and now they're starting to stockpile the tailings in that area. Moving on, the, to an excavation area, we looked at a, another photo. I'll wait until it comes up.
Hang on for one moment. So you're looking for the-
Excavation area.
Just a moment.
No, that's the final one, should be the one right before that.
Okay, just bear with me.
Sure.
So you want the area of the excavation?
Yes.
Okay, here it comes.
This is a study that we took in the last, in the 2018 photo that we just showed you. There was a area that had been excavated below the water table that is quite deep. This is on the westerly side of the site. There's a large area that is obviously being worked in the photo. And what we did was we, we drew a line around it to depict what the area is. There are other areas just to the north that are also under excavation, but we wanted to make a point that the area depicted in the red is about 110,000 square feet. And that obviously, on the west side of that, the cut is very, very deep, and then it tapers up as you move easterly. But for every 10 feet of fill or excavation that's done in this area, that relates to 40,000 cubic yards. And when we move on and we look, and when you were all out in the field, this was, the detention pond was further to the northwest, and we walked along the edge of this area. And you'll recall that there was not a deep hole or an excavation below the water table in that area. And that, that area, if you look at the satellite imagery from 2020, when you look at the imagery, the imagery from April of 2020 looks a lot like what we saw when we were on the field walk. We don't see any excavations below the water table. We don't see, except for that area that we all witnessed in the very north end of the site, everything else has been filled in and covered up. And so the point that we're, we're making with this presentation is that when we do go, or when the towns consultant does go and look at the site, there are areas which were, there were, the excavations were very deep, and they were below the water table. And it's our opinion that these areas have to be investigated for possibly fill going in that didn't meet DEEP's definition of clean fill, in order to make sure that this site is not going to yield future pollution. That concludes my presentation.
All right. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to now call on Evan Glass of Alta Environmental. And I note that, I believe that Mr. Glass's CV, resume is in the record at this time. I believe it was submitted. Don, are you able to confirm that in the list of exhibits?
You're looking for the, his credentials?
Yes.
You can just state his name again tonight.
Yes, I'll call, you know, we can do, we'll, for the moment, I'll call on Mr. Glass, and he can tell you briefly about his credentials.
Yeah, and I think he did that last time.
Yes.
You ready for me?
Yes.
For the record, my name is Evan Glass. I am a hydrogeologist and licensed environmental professional with Alta Environmental Corporation, Colchester, Connecticut. I'm presenting for the intervenor, Mr. Peter Metropolis. I believe my resume is in the record, so I won't take time for that now. Thank you in advance, Chairman Romano and other commission members, for providing me the opportunity to present before you tonight. The applicant has two project goals: to redirect water to the wetlands that have been starved of water by the prior quarry activities, and to construct a building. Both of these objectives would be met by using the existing fill at the site and by transporting a large amount of additional fill to the site to raise the grade. The first objective, restoring the wetland watershed area, appears to be a good one in principle, and I think we would all agree that the second objective, developing the site with a building, should be met in such manner not to interfere with the first objective. The applicant has said that it could take on the order of 10 years to achieve these objectives, because it could take that long to source enough of, enough of the specific type of fill he wants to use, specifically clean fill as defined by the Connecticut DEEP. In my mind, the primary issue with respect to water quality issues on this site seems to be what type of fill to use. The applicant would get paid for every ton of DEEP-defined clean fill brought to the site, but as I'll describe later, clean fill per the DEEP definition may not be appropriate to use for this project, because clean fill is a category of solid waste, and this is a very sensitive environmental setting. However, use of natural soil as fill would also meet both of the applicant's objectives. Natural soil would be of far less concern from a water quality standpoint, and could probably be sourced faster than 10 years, but would likely need to be paid for by the applicant. If one of the objectives of the applicant is to earn income from the intake of solid waste, then this application is also about running a solid waste disposal business. Mr. Chris Sullivan of the Southwest Conservation District has told the commission to be extra cautious with this application, and I concur with Mr. Sullivan's statement, not only because the site is within a map-drinking water supply watershed, but because of the sheer scale of the project, and also because the project involves solid waste. And the solid waste business has historically been fraught with all sorts of environmental and legal problems. Of course, we all want to assure that this is not the case here. I will try to provide you with information on how Connecticut struggles with the clean fill category of solid waste, upon which this application largely hinges. And I hope it will help you to make an informed and responsible decision about this application. So let's start with how the project could affect the wetlands. In terms of water quantity, the goal of re-establishing the pre-quarry watersheds is a good one. I'm encouraged that the applicant has hired a hydrogeologist, and the commission is considering the same. I trust that part of the hydrogeologist's work will be to analyze the pre-quarry and post-quarry watershed conditions, and ensure the intended goal will be met regarding water quantity. In terms of water quality, let's remember that the goal is to restore the wetland watersheds and to direct precipitation water from the quarry area to the water-starved wetlands by adding fill to the site. This means that the precipitation that falls on the fill will percolate through the fill and then flow to the wetlands. As precipitation percolates through the fill, the water chemistry of that precipitation will be affected by the type and quality of the fill. So of course, it is very important that the fill is of appropriate quality, so the wetlands receive water of appropriate quality. Since the proposed fill material will largely be solid waste materials, we can recall Mr. Sullivan's remark that we should be extra cautious with this application. In addition to the wetlands, there are other sensitive receptors. The site is located in the Boquonic River drainage basin, and the DEEP groundwater quality classification for most of the site is GAA. The GAA classification is DEEP's most protective groundwater classification, and is reserved for areas where the groundwater can or may contribute to public drinking water supplies. By contrast, a GB classification is used for urban and contaminated areas, where groundwater is not used for drinking, and GC areas are used for landfills. The DEEP also classifies the quality of Connecticut's streams, and the west branch of the Boquonic River and its unnamed tributary that's adjacent to the site are both classified AA. The class AA surface water classification is DEEP's most protective surface water classification, and is reserved for streams that contribute to public drinking water supplies. The application includes a map showing the site to be located within the Aquarian Water Company's West Boquonic Public Drinking Water Supply watershed, and we understand from Mr. Sullivan's district report that the west branch of the Boquonic River is diverted to the Town of Eastern Public Drinking Water Supply reservoir. And of course, there may be private drinking water wells in the project vicinity. So it is important that the materials that have already been disposed of at the quarry, and are proposed to be disposed of, do not adversely impact the groundwater quality or the surface water quality. To partially address this issue, I understand that the applicant has, I have heard him say that, that he has committed to only placing pristine natural soil below the water table. This may or may not be adequately protective, because of course, precipitation percolates through the materials that are above the water table, as well as those below the water table. But if it is to be a condition of, condition of this commission's approval, it's necessary that the applicant know where the seasonal high water table will be after the filling is completed. This is because the water table in every area generally mimics the ground surface contours, and therefore, the water table will almost certainly rise in response to the rising ground surface elevations as the fill is placed. It may rise so much, in fact, that nearly all of the fill placed at the quarry would need to be natural soil in order for the applicant to meet the commitment to place only natural soil below the water table. And if, big if, but if nearly all the soil has to be pristine natural soil, then why not simply use all natural soil as fill? The next thing I'd like to explain is why clean fill is solid waste. Per the Connecticut statutes, solid waste is any unwanted discarded solid, including but not limited to demolition debris and material processed at a recycling facility. The DEEP considers discarded to mean discarded from its original use, and it's made it clear that clean fill is solid waste. Hence, much or most of the materials already brought to the quarry, and currently proposed to be brought to the quarry, are solid waste. The clean fill includes used brick and concrete from buildings, used concrete and asphalt from roadways and parking lots, used concrete blocks from buildings, and used ceramics. In the DEEP Solid Waste Management Regulations, the present day of clean fill is, and you've heard it before, natural soil, rock, bricks, ceramics, concrete, and asphalt paving fragments, importantly, my word, that are virtually inert and propose neither a pollution threat to ground or surface waters. Also, certain types of polluted fill are included in the definition of clean fill. One more. How to interpret that qualifying phrase, "materials that are virtually inert and pose neither a pollution threat to ground or surface waters," has been and still is much debated, and I would assert that context matters. That is to say, where the materials are placed can determine whether they pose a threat. For instance, it just stands to reason that fill placed in a class GAA drinking water supply watershed area is more likely to pose a threat. Fill placed adjacent to wetlands for the purpose of providing water recharge to those wetlands is more likely to pose a threat. Fill placed within the watershed of a class AA streams is more likely to pose a threat. On the other hand, fill placed in a landfill in a class GC area is less likely to pose a threat, and if old asphalt is recycled into new asphalt rather than being placed as fill, it is less likely to pose a threat, and you'll see later where that comes in. So in my opinion, this application is in the more likely to pose a threat category due to its location in a sensitive GAA, AA area. As I mentioned, polluted soil can also meet the DEEP definition of clean fill, per the remediation standard regulations of the DEEP. Polluted soil, and from now on, I'll just say deep instead of DEEP, polluted soil is soil affected by contaminants at any concentration. Slightly polluted soil that meets certain deep standards and requirements can be reused, while heavily contaminated polluted soil must be properly treated and disposed of. It's very important to understand that if any polluted soil is brought to the quarry, even if it meets the most stringent deep soil remediation standards, that deep prior approval is required prior to its transport to the quarry, and failure to gain this prior approval is a DEEP violation. Due to common practices in the waste management and construction industries, there should be reasonable concern on behalf of the town that polluted soil may have made its way to the Rocket Quarry. Also, if any hazardous waste is defined by RACRA, any at all, has somehow made its way to the quarry prior to a qualifying property transfer, the Connecticut Property Transfer Act would apply, and the seller would by law need to make a transfer act filing in the, with deep. And one party, typically the buyer or the seller, would by law be required to investigate the entire site in accordance with prevailing standards and guidelines, and to remediate the entire site to meet the remediation standard regulations. And all this investigation and remediation would need to be verified by a licensed environmental professional. So what's the problem with clean fill? Deep itself considers the present day definition of clean fill to be problematic, and has sought to change it. as I will discuss later. But it's important to understand that the reason why the proposed activities involving the use of clean fill may be able to avoid deep solid waste permitting requirements is because of one legal exemption. And that exemption states that areas which are solely for the disposal of clean fill are exempt from the deep solid waste management regulations. Whether you or I or DEEP considers this to be an unfortunate loophole or not, it is the current law of the land and we must abide. But note the phrase, the use of the phrase "disposal of clean fill" is used, emphasizing that clean fill is solid waste that gets disposed of. While this exemption can be used to avoid deep permitting requirements, it is very important that the commission understand clearly the strict limitations and very narrow scope of the exemption, which include the following. If any materials that do not meet the definition of clean fill wherever or would ever be disposed of at the site, the site would not be exempt from the deep solid waste management regulations and would not be exempt from deep permitting requirements. Given the large volumes of materials that have already been disposed of at the quarry, it is likely that some do not strictly meet the definition of clean fill. If waste does not meet the definition of clean fill, has been or will be brought to the site, then the deep solid waste management regulations, including the deep permitting requirements, do apply to the quarry. In fact, during our site walkover on mine on Saturday, August 29th, I observed two types of waste in plain view on the ground at the site that do not meet the definition of clean fill, specifically coal and coal clinker. I have seen photographs of other materials at the site apparently not meeting the definition of clean fill, such as metal piping and rebar and painted asphalt and adhesives and the yellow paint on asphalt, which can have high concentrations of chromium. Also, notably missing from the existing deep definition of clean fill is cinder block. Cinder block is made using cinders that typically contain pollutants such as heavy metals and poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons, PAHs. Hence, any cinder block that has been or will be brought to the quarry would cause the quarry to not meet the clean fill exemption and would cause the quarry to be subject to the deep solid waste management regulations, including as regards to permitting. My review of the information recently submitted to the commission indicates that cinder block has been disposed of at the quarry. Hence, again, the deep solid waste matter regulations, including the permitting requirements, would seem to apply to the quarry. Furthermore, I'll note that DEEP considers only some used asphalt to meet the definition of clean fill and thereby be exempt from the solid waste manager regulations. I'll read from an October 2nd, 2006 memo from Mr. Robert Eisner, Director of the Deep Waste Engineering and Enforcement Division, to his DEEP staff. The memo had the subject line, "Regulatory Clarification: Asphalt Millings Are Not Clean Fill." The memo states, quote, "To help evaluate how to manage asphalt fragments, it is important to consider the size of the fragments." The general rule of thumb used by the deep solid waste program and remediation program are, quote, "bigger fragments are better." That is, typically fist-sized or greater than four-inch chunks are fragments that may be exempt from regulation as a solid waste. Asphalt pieces that are smaller than four inches, milling, shavings, dust, and the like, are typically not considered to meet the definition of clean fill. The reason for focusing on size is not, is that as the surface area of the asphalt increases, smaller pieces will have greater collective surface area, the likelihood of contaminated leak chain and mobilization of pollutant increases, unquote, from his memo. Obviously, during our site visit, we also saw piles of asphalt at the site containing thousands of fragments of asphalt less than four inches in size that, and DEEP, and DEEP does not consider these to be clean fill and therefore should require a deep solid waste permitting for this project. So what I'm saying is that the site is not exempt from the deep solid waste management regulations, including the deep permitting requirements. However, the Department of Environmental Protection, Energy and Environmental Protection, does not proactively police sites like this to make sure that permitting requirements are identified or met, apparently even after making site visits like it did to this site. So it's up to you, local governance, such as inland wetland commissions, to require the applicant to seek permits from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. The DEEP cannot and will not do it unless the applicant seeks a pre-application meeting with DEEP. And if the applicant does not voluntarily request that meeting, only an entity such as yours can require it, and I urge you to require it. Simply, I'm asking you to require the applicant to present its plans to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and get their feedback. As discussed further below, both I and DEEP recommend the commission request the applicant to participate in the pre-application meeting with DEEP to assess the need for DEEP permits and to discuss any other concerns DEEP may have about this project. So why does it fall to you, the inland wetlands committee, to do this? Why can't DEEP take a more proactive role? I called Mr. Frank Agliato of the Deep Waste Engineering Enforcement Division, and he told me that DEEP would like to require permits for processing and disposal operations such as this, but DEEP does not have, does not currently have the authority due to the clean fill disposal exemption that I discussed previously. Therefore, as far as DEEP is concerned, the onus is on the processing disposal operator, i.e. the applicant in this case, to understand the definition of clean fill and to do the appropriate sampling and testing. If there is a complaint of inappropriate activity, it would be investigated by DEEP. However, by then it could be too late to undo the damage done by any mismanagement of such large quantities of materials. When I discussed this project with Mr. Frank Agliato, he said that the applicant should request a DEEP pre-application meeting to identify any and all required permits that may be needed and to address other DEEP concern, any other DEEP concerns due to the size of the project and the planned filling of the quarry. So how would DEEP like to regulate solid waste, such as waste, concrete, asphalt, and brick? This information is presented on DEEP's website in documents prepared by DEEP about 2008. According to Ms. Diane Duvall, whom with I, which I spoke recently regarding this project and who worked on those 2008 documents, the processing of solid waste is recycling and DEEP would like to be able to require a deep recycling permit or a deep beneficial use determination for these types of activities. Either the permit or the use, or the use determination would specify, among other things, the permissible uses of the processed end products. For example, it is likely that used concrete would be allowed to be used for aggregate and could be placed below the water table, but used asphalt would only be allowed to be recycled into asphalt-related products that are almost solely used above the water table. As proposed by DEEP in 2008, asphalt, brick, concrete, and ceramic would be classified as regulated fill, not as clean fill. Proposed clean fill and regulated fill definitions are essentially as follows. Clean fill would be only natural soil, the type of material that the applicant has said he would use below the water table. And regulated fill would include used asphalt, brick, ceramic, and concrete. And the regulated fill would be used or reused beneficially in compliance with a DEEP written authorization or permit or recycled at a facility with a DEEP written authorization or permit. So in short, the DEEP would like to recycle old asphalt into new asphalt. The DEEP would like used brick, ceramic, and concrete to be used as construction or grading material, but only if they are visibly free of oil, adhesive stains, and paint, free of contaminants, including but not limited to oils, paint, lead, murky, and PCBs based on knowledge of the source or on representative sampling and testing. So in summary, DEEP would like to define clean fill as natural soil and more stringently regulate the waste materials such as brick, asphalt, concrete, and ceramic. However, this is largely moot because the legislature has not promulgated or proposed these changes. But it's important for the commission to understand where things stand and how DEEP thinks about things. And there are DEEP permit requirements to be met to the extent that materials are at or would be brought to the quarry that DEEP does not consider to meet even the present day definition of green fill, the aforementioned coal, coal clinker, cinder block, tar-coated concrete, any painted brick, asphalt fragments less than four inches in size, metal. All of this is very technical, but it points out a fundamental, the fundamental problem that DEEP has with its own and fairly old, but still current definition of clean fill upon which this application largely hinges. So I simply urge the commission to require the applicant to meet with the DEEP, who is more familiar with the clean fill, solid waste issue than anyone, so that any required DEEP permits may be obtained and any other DEEP concerns can be addressed. Even with the best of intentions, the control of the types and quality of the materials transported to disposal areas such as quarries can prove to be problematic and the DEEP requirements can be misunderstood. Here are just a few examples. In 2013, Julian Enterprises was awarded a bid to operate the processing facility in nearby Fairfield with the goal of reducing the volume of material at the site. According to the contract, Julian was prohibited from accepting hazardous or contaminated materials at the site. However, by 2016, the volume of the material at the site had increased rather than decreased, and there were numerous complaints about truck traffic. This prompted the town to hire a firm to investigate, which found that three Julian dump trucks had unloaded piles of gray-brown, gray-brown granular material at the back of the site. They took samples which were tested and found to contain high levels of PCBs at six times the state standards and lead at double the concentration considered hazardous. As a result, the Fairfield site was immediately shut down. One more example. In 2009, a legal case was heard in Danbury Superior Court involving a quarry in Brookfield and a company named Rock Acquisition LP. Mr. Robert Parker was a financier with significant corporate investment experience who founded his own investment company, which in the 1980s invested in the Brookfield Quarry at a time when the quarry owners were encountering serious financial difficulties. There were state and federal liens against the property and the quarry's future was at risk. By 1992, Rock Acquisition owned all of the Brookfield Quarry. The portion of the Brookfield Quarry case that's pertinent to clean fill involved the quarry owner seeking compensation for future income associated with the use of the quarry as a clean fill disposal area. He was seeking $6.1 million. The DEEP testified that such activity could not occur without state and local permits and the authorizations, which may or may not be granted depending on the quality of the soil, type of material, et cetera, and the judge rejected the property owner's valuation. That is, the quarry owner did not get the $6.1 million because the court ruled that the quarry owners did not properly consider DEEP's permitting role in valuing the potential future income and that it was the quarry owner's burden to demonstrate that the material accepted on-site was strictly limited to clean fill as opposed to solid waste materials which would require a solid waste management permit. In the Brookfield case, the court was not persuaded the materials in question met the definition of clean fill, citing that an essential element to the definition of clean fill is that the materials must be inert and not pose a threat of contamination. The court said that absent such a showing, the backfilling operation would be a disposal activity requiring a DEEP permit to operate as a solid waste disposal area. And as an aside, in that decision in the Brookfield case, a quarry in Bernardville, New Jersey was discussed where an illegal dump containing asbestos was found on that dump. An illegal dump on that, in that quarry. So how can we, how can you protect the town of Monroe from these sorts of problems? Well, the applicant's initial material acceptance procedure was supposed to do this, but it appeared to rely heavily on self-certification certificates of conformance signed by the owners of the materials being brought to the quarry that, and saying that the materials meet certain and limited acceptance requirements. The certificates of conformance seem to specify only two things, that the owner of the materials self-certified that the materials met the definition, DEEP definition of clean fill, and recall that this definition is problematic, and that the quarry entities are indemnified and held harmless in connection with any non-conforming materials. The initial procedure did not appear to require any testing data or other documentation from the, from the material owners verifying that the materials met the definition of clean fill. And the inclusion of the indemnification and hold harmless provision seemed almost to expect the potential for intake of non-compliant materials. Using the initial proposed material acceptance procedure, if non-compliant materials were brought to the site, in my opinion, it would be nearly impossible to identify which customer was responsible for which materials. But in any case, the applicant would be indemnified and held harmless for any damages. The initial material acceptance procedure seems to prescribe only very sparse testing, one sample per 3,000 cubic yards of intake waste stream. This is approximately one sample per 150 to 200 truckloads and in my opinion, would be grossly inadequate to appropriately represent materials from likely differing source areas. Even one truck can contain materials from differing source areas on a single site. And groups of 150 to 200 trucks would often include loads from different sites with differing contamination potentials. Also, the procedure did not prescribe any pass/fail criteria for the testing. In others' opinion, this level and lack of testing would have provided no meaningful control over the quality of materials being brought to the quarry. Happily, the applicant has submitted a revised material acceptance procedure and is much improved over the original, but still leaves some important questions and could be improved as follows. For example, consider checking asphalt as well as concrete pavement for paint. Come to an understanding with DEEP regarding the size of asphalt fragments that can be accepted. Consider checking the loads after they are dumped to get a better look in addition to an initial check of the materials in the truck. Consider returning copper, nickel, and zinc to the testing list. These were on the initial list, and I don't know why they were removed from the new list. Specify whether the full list of semi VOCs or just a subset of that list would be sought by the testing. Both the full list and the subset are commonly used in various, for various purposes. And it just has to be specified which, which and when those tests would be run. Specify whether the samples would be discreet samples or composite samples or a combination. There still seems to be no pass/fail criteria that I saw. The material gets tested, but the data don't seem to get compared to anything to determine acceptability versus non-acceptability. Consider checking the one per 3,000 cubic yard rockhead QAQC testing data criteria before the material is entombed and difficult to remove if needed. Consider record-keeping and reporting requirements. For example, transmitting the data to the town for review in its files. And consider prescribing that LEPs do the work to test the soil at the source areas before the site, before they, before that soil gets to the site and to fill out and sign the soil disposal applications. And specifying LEPs, I think, has a lot of benefits, as I'll get to in a moment. Consider prescribing that a rockhead LEP review and sign off on those applications and develop and implement the QAQC sampling and testing program at the quarry. And what about the testing and materials that has already been brought to the site? Well, Mr. Mark Jepson, an environmental analyst with DEEP, visited the site in February with Mr. John Kimball, who's a former owner of the site and current consultant to the applicant. And in a May 2020 memo, Mr. Jepson stated, and I quote, "The contact, Mr. Kimball, said that some analytical testing of inbound materials has been conducted and that the sampling protocol was in place. Sampling protocol and any test results were requested at the time of my visit. This information was requested several times later. And as of the date of this report, none of the requested information has been submitted," unquote. I contacted Mr. Jepson that last, last in July, by which time he still had not received any information regarding the analytical testing of inbound or any other materials associated with the site. The applicant did eventually submit testing data and other data that we'll discuss in a moment, seemingly in response to comments received at this hearing. And I have the following comments and questions based on my review of a selection of those materials. Much or most of the information seems to be in the form of pre-demolition, pre-demolition, pre-demolition building surveys for lead and asbestos. So it is not clear how these surveys relate to the materials that were brought to the quarry. For example, lead surveys would often pertain largely to painted wooden buildings, but it seems that wood- but it seems that wood typically was not brought to the quarry. Similarly, the asbestos surveys seem like they largely pertain to materials that were not brought to the quarry such as duct insulation and floor tile. So it would be helpful if the applicant's LEP could explain the linkage between the building surveys and the materials that were brought to the quarry. There also seems to be very little testing of data for soil samples that has been submitted. And where there is testing data, I could not tell what the sampling frequency was. For example, how much soil is represented by a single sample? It'd be helpful if the applicant and its LEP could indicate the total amount of materials that have been brought to the site, which reports and data represent which materials, determine the sampling frequency, and draw conclusions on whether all the materials have been appropriately characterized. For example, at the one sample for 250 cubic yards as prescribed by the current material acceptance procedure. Some specific comments regarding the recent submittal of this information are as follows. The documentation for the 57 Gower Road property indicates the materials from there include tar-coated cinder block, which is not a clean fill component. The materials for a site in Monroe are described as glazed CMV block. CMV stands for Concrete Masonery Unit, which I understand can include cinder block. The soil from the Amazon site is represented by one sample, but has not indicated how much soil is represented by this one sample. The Palmer's Road soil indicates an intake of "mixed loads", which may include soil, but there are no soil sample data. The Route 25 Monroe material is described as rock with a minimal amount of soil, but there is no testing for soil and investigation reporters referred to but not summarized or included. It is not clear what material came from Wade's Garage, but auto facilities are listed in the applicant's material acceptance procedure as a high-risk usage on the automatically rejected materials list at the discretion of management. So what else can be done? While DEP currently may not have proactive authority for cases such as this, significant protections can be afforded to the town.
Mr. Glass?
Yeah.
We're going to, you're only going to have about five more minutes and that's giving you a solid hour. So try to, try to get to any have to move into.
I probably have five, I probably have five to seven minutes left.
Okay. You got it.
The Palmer's Road soil and the Route 25 Monroe material described it, oh, I got that. Ah, got that, okay. What? While the DEP currently may not, okay, what else can be done? The DEP, the town can avail itself of the DEP LEP program. LEPs are licensed by the state of Connecticut to investigate and remediate sites and LEPs are essentially deputies of DEP. In order to maintain their licenses, LEPs must abide by rigorous rules of professional conduct in order to safeguard the environment. These rules of professional conduct require an LEP must at all times hold paramount the health, safety, and welfare of the public and the environment. An LEP must make a good faith and reasonable effort to identify and obtain the relevant data and other information about a site. And if at any time after rendering a conclusion, an LEP learns that a condition existed that leads to a contrary conclusion, then the LEP must promptly notify the client in writing and in certain cases must notify the DEP. Hence, the town can arrange for relatively high-quality control over site activities by requiring LEP involvement throughout and following the filling portion of the project. I understand that the town is considering retaining an independent consultant to review the technical application materials and provide guidance and to do investigations, and I strongly encourage the town to do so. In my opinion, that consultant should have on staff or at least on call an LEP, a Connecticut licensed environmental, Connecticut licensed professional engineer, a Connecticut certified soil scientist, and a hydrogeologist. I will skip past in the interest of brevity information regarding the scope of work for the town consultant because I provided a separate letter that's in the record on that. So I will close by indicating some things that in my opinion would be reasonable for you, the inland wetlands commission, to require for this application. It seems reasonable that the applicant demonstrate that the prior and proposed filling will not cause groundwater or surface water pollution that would adversely impact the wetlands or other sensitive receptors. Given the discussion of clean fill and solid waste, simply claiming that the materials meet the present day and problematic definition of clean fill is not an acceptable demonstration in my opinion. It seems reasonable that the applicant demonstrate that DEP has reviewed the project through its pre-application process and is satisfied with any and all passed and proposed filling of the quarry. Seems reasonable that the applicant demonstrate what materials have already been brought to the quarry, where they are located, and what is the basis for concluding whether this is appropriate. The applicant should demonstrate that unacceptable materials have not already been placed at the quarry below the water table and if they were, they should be removed and replaced with acceptable materials like natural soil. This is per the applicant's commitment. It seems reasonable that the applicant demonstrate that the post-filling water flow rates and volumes to the wetlands closely match those that pre-existed the quarry. The applicant should demonstrate in a way that we can all understand whether the material already and/or proposed to be brought in and shipped has been appropriately sampled and tested, whether any polluted fill or materials not considered clean fill was or will be brought to the site and if so, that the appropriate approvals and permits be obtained by DEP. It seems reasonable that the applicant require LEPs to develop and sign off on the sampling and testing of the materials to assure that non-conforming materials are not disposed of at the quarry. The applicant should accept responsibility for any non-conforming materials that may ultimately be determined to have been transported to and possibly from the site and to post sufficient bond to back up the applicant's responsibility. Seems reasonable that the applicant retain an LEP or pay for the town's LEP to sign off on the intake documentation and oversee the quarry's own QAQC testing. And finally, it seems reasonable that the applicant seriously consider as a simple alternative, the use of natural soil to accomplish the filling and wetlands restoration goals rather than the use of solid waste. If all the information that the town in consultation with its consultant seems necessary to make his decision is not available by the time this application runs its course, then I would recommend that the town reject the application without prejudice and the applicant can obtain the additional information and resubmit a new application for your consideration. In conclusion, it seems that judicious application of town governance through agencies such as yours, the inland wetlands commission, is required to make sure that this property in your town is managed responsibly and does not become a problem for future generations. I thank you for listening. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I'm Mr. Glass. Sorry.
Who's that? You're going to wrap this up quickly?
Well, I think unfortunately, Mr. Glass, I think, is running into your hour deadline, so I think that we'll.
Had a minute, an hour and one minute. So if you want to wrap this up real quickly, you got a couple minutes.
I just need a couple of moments to run through some photographs with Mr. Glass that are exhibits. And then I would, I guess, defer the balance of my presentation until Mr. Logan appears at the next meeting of the commission.
Do you have?
With the chair. Well, there are about 10 pictures and I think we can go through them quickly. But I think they'll be very informative for the commission.
We need to move on to third-party consultants, so let's see if we have time for that either later or maybe you could present those, you know, just directly to staff. I don't know if that's appropriate. I'm trying to think about our time crunch.
Can I share one photograph, one photograph, Mr. Chairman, that I think will be very informative?
One photograph and then we're off.
If I could have screen sharing, please?
You should still have it, Mr. Green.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
This is actually a photo that was available on Bing Maps. I can't, I don't have a date for this photo, but I think that it is significant in that I know that everyone on the commission had an opportunity to be part of the site visit. I think this is very vividly illustrates the area that Mr. Bjorklund was speaking of. You can see the significant level of excavation that was occurring on what I believe I'll call the western side of the northern portion of the site. Certainly, we all saw, and I'm using my cursor to show the deep excavation here. This area was, by my observation, completely filled when we walked the site. And it certainly illustrates, once again, the dramatic filling. This is just the other side of that. This is a view from the west side looking east that similarly shows this huge area of excavation in this area, and I think it speaks volumes to the commission. Mr. Chairman, I do have a longer wrap-up on my presentation. It sounds like I'm going to have to defer that.
Thank you. We will have to defer that.
All right. However, I do, once again, the intervenor urges the commission to proceed with the selection of a consultant. I think that Mr. Glass really vividly illustrated the issue. Certainly, you can see the dramatic filling that has gone on on the site, the need for an exploration and the lack of adequate data on the fill that was used to fill these huge areas of the site. And with that, I will suspend my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Now, can we get that picture off the screen, please? Back to full screen. Who do we have tonight from? Representative from Weston and Sampson here this evening?
Yes, sir. This is Malcolm Beeler with Weston and Sampson.
Okay, thank you. Do we have? Malcolm, correct?
Correct.
You have somebody from? Can you take him off-screen so we can get this off? Yeah, please. Can we get the, whoever is in control? I'm looking for a representative from Arcadis.
Hello, this is Russ Dorenzo from Arcadis out of Sandy Hook. Nice to hear you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll leave EnSafe. We have a representative from EnSafe this evening. Anyone from EnSafe? All right, well, you here and have a complication, chime in. Let's go, and I just want to also hi Chris Sullivan from the Southwest Conservation District. He's with us this evening. Commissioners, you've all, I assume you've all reviewed the three proposals that are in play. If you have any questions about the Weston and Sampson or Penns, I'm sorry, the Arcadis proposal, because they're the only people with representation tonight. Feel free, I'm just going to go down the line so we make sure that everything gets. Hey, Commissioners, any questions about the two proposals? Or even the third one, if you want to discuss with us, the other commissioners, about the EnSafe one? Of course, we could speak on it, but there's no one here that I know from EnSafe to comment. And of course, you could also ask Mr. Sullivan any questions about the applications to proposals. So, Commissioners, let's start with you.
I would actually like to defer my company until other commissioners have had a chance at it.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, for Russ Dorenzo, you've got a fixed fee for this project. Totalling, what is it, $9,500?
That's correct.
You feel comfortable with that fee and with potential mission creep?
Understood, mission creep. You must be in business. Yes. Let me, let me explain who I am. My name's Russ Dorenzo. I'm the Associate Vice President at Arcadis. We have a office in Sandy Hook, Connecticut. I run the Connecticut offices. We also have an office in Middletown, Connecticut. Arcadis is a global organization, but I run a local or local office in Sandy Hook. I have a long history with Monroe. I started my career in Monroe at YWC and then Land Tech Remedial. So 14 years with Monroe and within Monroe. I have a degree in geology from the University of New Hampshire. I have a master's in environmental science from the University of New Haven. I've been a chairman of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands Commission for 23 years. I've been a selectman in Roxbury for 23 years. What I feel I offer this commission is I'm local. I understand the regulations of wetlands because I've served on a commission. I still serve. I understand what you go through and I'm very interested in this project. Arcadis obviously is a global corporation, so a $9,500 project isn't that important to the company. It's important to me. And that's why I bid on this. The project's very interesting. Listening tonight, I see there's a lot of regulatory issues and I think I could be of great service to the Monroe Inland Wetlands Commission in helping you with this. So yes, $9,500 is a risk to my company, but I'm willing to take that risk because a lot of the time I give to my clients is on my own time. Like right now, Arcadis isn't paying me to be here at 8:29 at night. But I also understand what you go through. I was on a public hearing call last night for our commission in Roxbury till 10 o'clock and I applaud the chairman for cutting this off. I get it. We lose our focus after a while. So that's where I am. I wasn't at the last meeting because I was on vacation. I have three teenage boys that I'm raising on my own and vacations are important to me. So I was not here at that meeting, but thank you to the town for giving me this opportunity. I do have some potential conflicts. We ran a conflict check with Arcadis and there are no conflicts with Arcadis. But Arcadis does have a job in Hartford with ONG. ONG is separate from us. We are not, we did not hire them. The client did not hire, we're separate. And my group up there tells me there's no conflict. I know Jane Warren. I respect Jane Warren. I want to bring that right out. I've worked with Jane Warren on two projects over many years and I have a lot of respect for her. Evan Glass, his company Alta was sued not too long, a couple of years ago and I was retained as an expert for that lawsuit by their law firm. Alta did not pick me. The law firm picked me. Somebody hit a water line which caused a million-dollar problem in Waterbury. And of course, anybody involved in that project was sued, Alta being one of them since they were the LEP. Evan was not the LEP, but his partner was. Evan was not the LEP, but his partner was. And I fortunately found reason why Alta was ultimately not responsible, and that case was solved based on my expert testimony. So, Arcadis does not see any conflict, but I'm being honest. I know Jane, a lot of people, a lot of people who are licensed environmental professionals know Jane. She's very well respected in the environmental community, and our community is very, it's a clique. I'm working with Evan on a project right now where he's on the other side, but it's not contentious at all. But I want to bring all that out.
We have to keep moving along, and thank you for all.
Yeah, go ahead, I just want to make sure you know upfront, that's who I am, and that's what I got.
I want to get my commissioners back to getting their questions answered. So, Commissioner Stewart, do you have anything further?
Yeah, the same, same similar question to Weston and Sampson. They've got a not to exceed $10,000. Is that a hard, is that a hard number, or is that going to change depending on, on scope issues?
Just for a second, Commissioner Stewart, let me just, I was given some information today that I want to share with the commission. Under section 810, any hired, and Barbara, please correct me if I say this wrong, a hired third-party consultant can bill up to 150% of their, of their accepted proposal under our regulation. So, there is some wiggle room for, for our consultant, I guess. Okay, so go ahead, Commissioner Stewart, go ahead and finish.
This is Malcolm Beeler with Weston and Sampson. I am an LEP in Connecticut, we have an office in Rocky Hill, and I've worked in the state for 20 years. Based on my experience from investigating similar sites to this, that number, I believe, will not be exceeded unless significant additional items are added on to the investigation. What I see right now is a request from the intervenor to inspect, to do some sampling of fill materials already placed on the site. I am current, and this similar site that was referenced is the Fairfield Aggregate Recycling Yard. I'm currently the LEP of record for the town of Fairfield, and I've been conducting investigations of, of what was supposedly clean fill placed at the site by Julian, and have been doing that under this, you know, review of deep and EPA. So, I have quite a bit of experience dealing with investigations of these types of materials. You know, there was the request that, you know, there'd be a soil scientist and Connecticut Licensed PE, we have those, as well as a hydrogeologist with a great deal of experience who could do the other part of the scope of work, which is evaluation of the water table and particularly the high water table. And I believe that, yes, if the scope of work is, is kept at that, we will come in for under $10,000.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Stewart?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gingrich, any questions for, or even on the, again, we could also discuss anything. I don't, I don't have any questions right now, they've answered everything that Mr. Stewart asked. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mastaraco?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
Yes, I do have a question for Arcadis from D'Enzo. In looking at your scope and the items one through five that you would cover, my, am I to assume that you would be the person who would perform all of this work?
Absolutely.
And if there was work required that went beyond your skill set and beyond what you proposed here, and you were to be using the other resources from your company, would there be additional cost to that?
No.
Okay, and the other thing I noticed here is that your assumption is that the contracts end, contract ends at the end of 2020. So, in effect, you put a date cap on your, your cost. If the work continues after the end of 2020, how would you propose handling that?
Our proposal shows the exact scope of work we would perform. If we don't perform it by the end of 2020, then we would continue to perform it. We put a stop date because we assume that the public hearing will be ended by then, by law, and that you would no longer need our services after that date. We didn't want it to go on until June, obviously, because these things do go on, but that, all the work would be performed by then. But we would continue beyond that date if the public hearing or the commission's decision hadn't been reached by then. And I'm, I'm glad to submit a letter clarifying that statement.
Okay, thanks, and that was the only question I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I do have a question, Russell, in that, well, I think, and actually to Malcolm as well. I mean, I don't think we can close the hearing until you guys are done with the work, so it almost sounds like it's inconsequential that you say an end date, because we can't really finish this without your, your report. Back to Commissioner Spence, any question, or you want me to ask mine first?
You can ask yours first, I'll come off.
My question, just so happens, unfortunately, the proposal that's in contention, they had a line, and actually, another one that we had to discard, two other companies had test borings included in their proposal. I think it was at least two on one of them. And both Weston and Sampson and Arcadis is not mentioning that in their proposal. And I was wondering what your reason for not, when, when two of your, you know, your, what's the word, peers, I would say, requested it, and you guys did not, what is your reasoning for not requesting boring holes on the property? You can start, Russell, you can go ahead and go first.
Um, the bid is for a consultant. A consultant doesn't do the work. The consultant consults with the commission as to what the experts are saying. The commission should not hire anybody to do actual work. That's up to the applicant. The applicant has to provide all the information that's needed to make this application viable. If the applicant doesn't provide that information, then the application is incomplete, and it should be denied.
Okay. Mr. Beeler, you have an answer to that question?
Our, our response is the same as Arcadis. If you look at our proposal, we indicated that we would provide a, a field technician to observe sampling performed, performed by the applicant and can, and collect split samples, which we would submit to an alternative laboratory. We gave prices for all the different analyses that would be done, but for our experience with work like this, is working as a consultant to a commission, that it is the applicant who performs the work, and then we would provide support to get information for the commission as requested.
So, my, I'm going to ask a question of our counsel, Barbara Jellberg. So, that, that, to me, poses a little bit of a, an issue if, if we hire a consulting firm, happens when they request activity from the applicant in order to complete their job.
Well, I would assume that the applicant would cooperate with it, with our consultants, just as the applicant cooperated with Mr. Sullivan.
Yep. Okay. And then, my last thing was, the, I forgot, no. Go ahead, Lois, if you want to, go ahead and ask. Oh, that's right, sorry, I'm sorry. I was going to ask Chris Sullivan, could you shed a light on my question, why some application, some proposals require test holes and the other ones do not?
This is Chris Sullivan from Southwest Conservation District, just, thanks, Mr. Chair. Honestly, I don't, I wasn't involved in putting the proposals together, and I don't represent any of the firms that submitted those bids. You know, I mean, if, if one of the firms thought that that would be important to conduct extra borings or samples to get a picture of the site, that's why they would request that, or include that in their proposal to the commission. So, you know, and it sounds like from the two representatives that are here, they would be willing to recommend additional sampling, but the applicant's LEP or hydrogeologist would actually take those samples at the locations recommended by the firm that would end up being hired by the commission. I hope I'm not putting words in your mouth, gentlemen, but that was kind of the way I interpreted it, so.
I think I'm satisfied with what you've all, how you all responded. I do have a, then, though, another question for Malcolm Beeler. In your proposal, you have the, you have the the test, the analytical, analytical data costs. Okay, but you don't really have any budget on that. And that, I assume, is outside of your proposal for the analysis, correct?
No, I mean, the analysis would be covered. The reason why I don't have a set fee in there is that I didn't have a copy of the investigation program that the applicant intended to perform. We would, you know, in, in, in my proposal, I would say, after we got a scope of work and request to support the commission, we would provide a, you know, a proposal to do the work with the, and I provided the sampling costs and the labor rates so that the, you know, so the commission would know, you know, what we would base any proposal we provided on. You know, so again, we would, you know, the applicant would hire the boring contractor or test pin contractor, whatever, and then we would, you know, provide the field technician to, to go to the site and collect split samples if the town desired that as well.
But you're saying that's above the not to exceed?
No, that is all going to be part of the cost. We would not exceed the $10,000. We would give you a scope of work that would fit the town's desire, and it would be for less than that.
That's all that I have. Commissioner Spence, you're the last one with any question?
Just a couple. One of the things that I would like to see happen, it was not originally on our, your request for proposal, but would be assistance in coming up, developing approval conditions. Would you be willing to help us with that as part of your proposal?
This is Russ from Arcadis, I would be glad to, no additional charge, I've done more than I care to talk about, so I have a lot of experience with coming up with conditions for approval.
And, and the same here for Weston and Sampson, we would support the town.
I'm sorry, you should probably just say your name again for the record. I, you're?
This is Malcolm Beeler with Weston and Sampson. We would support the town in developing of applicant, you know, criterion for acceptance. Yes, that's something we would be prepared to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more. One of the things that I haven't heard discussed, and I'm not sure I know enough about it to really get into too much detail, but the groundwater hydrology of the wetlands themselves, the directional flow levels, all that stuff, there has been one geologist that has given us a written report. How would you, would you only consult on his report, or would you go out there and look at the site yourself and come up with a report for us so that we have more information? Because as of right now, we have nothing from a hydrogeologist.
This is Malcolm Beeler with Weston and Sampson. Mr. Frank Getzel is the hydrogeologist on our project team. A copy of his resume is included in the, in the, in the proposal that we provided. Mr. Getzel would perform a site visit, review site data made to him, and then provide an opinion as to the various items, the seasonal groundwater table, whether or not the fill materials place is going to restore this site properly, and, and other, other items that are appropriate under his experience.
Mr. D'Enzo?
Russ D'Enzo from Arcadis. I'm the hydrogeologist, 30 years' experience, and I am a licensed environmental professional. I can't wait to get out there and look at this, because I live, eat, and sleep. I have to feel it before I could give any opinion. You know, you could give me all the reports you want, but you need to go out and look at it, look at the hydrogeology, and have a clear understanding of it. I have a lot of experience with wetland mitigation. Two of the largest superfund sites in Connecticut are mine, Beacon Heights Landfill or Park Landfill, where there were major wetland mitigation projects. I have to tell the commission, wetlands mitigation, hydrology, it's very complicated, takes a long time. I have a lot of opinions about what I heard tonight, and of course, I can't share them till I'm hired, but yes, I would go out and give you an opinion on whether this could even be done. It might not be able to be done, so that all depends on so many factors. But I'm, I'm a technical person, but I'm a practical person, and I, I speak English to people because our commissions are made up of people who are not supposed to be experts, and, and I pride myself on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You all set, Commissioner?
I'm all done.
All right, so are we prepared now to make a choice? Or be prepared to make a choice? So, I'll just go down, and I guess, just each commissioner to, you know, state which proposal you prefer, and we'll see how that adds up. All right, so we'll start with you, Commissioner Spence? No?
Should never even put me, then you put me last.
All right, Commissioner Stewart?
I always get to be first, then, this is great. Okay, um, I have worked with, with Russ before, I don't know if he remembers me, and Arcadis recently. We've also, in my job, currently working with Weston and Sampson, so they're both quality firms, and I'm sure they both can do the job. The other firm is, is, from what I recall, significantly more expensive, and I, given the timeframe we have, I don't, I don't see it justifies that level of expense. It is a short, just to cut to the chase, I like the Arcadis proposal because it's a fixed fee versus an hourly rate. So, that would be, I guess, my recommendation at this point.
You're, you're going for a fee. Okay. Commissioner Gingrich? I'm actually going to, I'm going to go the same direction, Arcadis with a fixed rate, and with it, that's my vote. All right, Commissioner Mastaraco?
I'm thinking the selectman from Roxbury. The gentleman, the gentleman that was first selectman at Roxbury, what's his name, D'Enzo?
That's Arcadis.
Okay.
You're in Arcadis. All right, Commissioner Hall?
I have reviewed both their proposals. I think the costs come out to be similar, but I believe that the level of detail in the Weston Sampson proposal and their skill set available for this leads me to vote for Weston Sampson.
I will chime in. I feel better about the, the recent work detailed by Weston Sampson. So, I'm actually, it's a toss-up, really, hard, the hard choice, because they're both excellent, they both made a gr- Hard, the hard choice because they're both excellent. They both made a great presentation. Obviously, both qualified, but I'm in for Weston-Sampson. All right, Commissioner Spence?
Oh, we're in trouble now. They're both very, very highly qualified firms, and either one of them, I think, would be absolutely fabulous. What pushes me over the edge would be Mr. D'Arenzo was, and is so familiar and his wetland affiliation, and his itchiness to get into, involved in the project. I think that, that kind of pushes me over the cliff on that one, so I have to say Arcadis.
All right. Now, my question for staff is, is this good enough to vote? Or do we have to make some kind of other motion? And we have a four to two. Four for Arcadis and two for.
You should make, somebody should make a formal motion, and I believe staff has a draft that can be used as a guide.
I do. Would you like me to read that draft?
Sure.
Okay. Selection of independent hydrogeologist consultant pursuant to section eight dash ten of Monroe Inland Wetlands Water Courses Regulation and as recommended by the Southwest Conservation District Report dated August 2020, the Monroe Inland Wetland Commission hereby selects, which I believe you're leaning toward Arcadis, so I'll put that in there. Excuse me. To serve as an independent hydrogeological consultant to the Town of Monroe Inland Wetland Commission in association with Inland Wetland Application IWC 2020-03R and shall perform the following work. Perform a third-party review and evaluation of all data previously collected by the applicant as well as the hydrogeologic data currently proposed to be collected by the applicant's subconsultant. The, number two, the independent review and evaluation activity shall include evaluate existing data and documents, evaluate new hydrogeologic data, installation of ground monitoring wells as determined, development of groundwater evaluation data and a water table map, implementation of ground elevation, excuse me, my phone keeps going, implementation of ground elevation monitoring program, elevation of the status of vernal pools and wetlands on the property and future impacts during the proposed project. Soil and groundwater quality investigation, including soil borings and excavation of soil samples, assessment of stormwater and erosion control measures, evaluate the proposed material acceptance procedure, assist in the development of any potential approval of the application. Number three, all work shall be completed by, hopefully you have a date. The scope of work as authorized by the Monroe Inland Wetlands shall not exceed, and there can fill in a dollar amount. Payment of the independent consultant shall be paid in full by the applicant with confirmation of said payment before the execution of the contract. That's the full draft.
Okay, so we're not going to read that again, so make a motion in that draft as language to accept Arcadis or to, to, to vote for Arcadis as our consulting?
So, so I'll make that motion, and we need a, I guess we need a ending date of the, of the work, so I'm going to use December 31st.
Uh, no, that's, that doesn't work because the public hearing has to close by then. So, I mean, from a practical perspective, we're gonna need this, I would think, much sooner. So that it can be evaluated.
I like to end in November.
But what, what is, you know, perhaps you, you could ask the consultant what a, what a reasonable date would be.
Let's go, let's go ask Malcolm, rather. He's still here.
Yeah, I'm still here.
All right, I don't see you, but that's okay. When can you, when would you be able to complete? There you are. How much time do you need to complete the tour?
Well, I mean, the hydrogeologic review, the site visit could be started in.
Mr. Dealer, I believe question, I'm sorry, I gave, I'm called under one person. I apologize, Mr. Dealer. I meant to ask Russell that question. Russell?
Yes.
How much time do you need to complete tasks?
Whatever you need.
What?
Whatever you need, we'll do it.
Say by the end of November? Wait, when's, when's our November meeting, Donna? When's our November meeting?
Oh, um, sorry, got too many things going on here.
I can relate.
Let's see here. The November meeting, now we only have one in November, and that's November 18th. And that unfortunately was due to Veterans Day.
And what do we have after the 18th? And what do we have in December?
Yep, we have one meeting in December, and that's the 9th.
November 18th. Russell, we need it done by November?
Yeah, yep. I'd like to do site walk next week, right away. I, I would need somebody to meet me out there, obviously. But I could, I want to get right out there and, and get this rolling.
I'm up to date on all the information that's been submitted. I've read all the reports.
The applicant is accommodating, but we're, are, are, you know, our deadline is November 18th, and preferably a day or two beforehand if it's going to be.
I'll get it to you Friday because the 18th is Wednesday. I know because we have a meeting on the Monday, the 16th. I'll get it to you Friday, but I need to get out there next week with somebody who knows the site and could walk me around. I could walk myself around, but it's better to have somebody. Obviously, the applicant has to be there.
Also, just to keep this moving on, so let's, let's make the motion again with the date of, what was that date going to be?
Barbara, when is the public hearing have to be closed?
Barbara or Donna?
I believe December 31st is the last date. However, obviously, we don't want to be meeting on New Year's Eve, and besides that, I, I think it would be ideal if we, we could save some time in, in, in case the commission needs some extra time for deliberations. Because if we, if we use all of the extra time for the public hearing, not, you know, there won't be any extensions possible after that. So I would encourage, I would encourage the commission to try to get the public hearing closed earlier if possible.
Barbara, does that include the 90-day extension that's allowed under executive order?
Yeah, we've already, we've been doing this for a while now. So we've already used that extension up. We're now into the applicant's extension.
You're done.
Sixty-five days.
Yeah.
So, so November 18th? Okay, I wanted to modify my motion to November 18th as a completion date.
Okay. So we have a motion for Commissioner Stewart. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Hall. Hall in favor?
Wait a minute, you need discussion.
What? Oh.
There, there also were, there also were some other items to fill in in that motion. You actually didn't, you have to, you know, specify who the consultant is. I believe the amount, the cost, correct? Donna, you can let the commissioners know what they, what items need to be filled in to complete the motion.
Right, so it's Arcadis that would be to serve as the independent hydrogeological consultant. And then the work shall be completed by, it sounds like you're doing November 18th?
Yes.
That's to me. That's to me. So we're hoping to have it completed by the Friday. To Russell, by the Friday before that meeting, so.
Was that the 14th, I think?
The 12th.
Okay, yep. But I gotta get out there next week, obviously.
Good evening, members of the commission. It's Kevin Solly for the record. I was just going to offer that we can make ourselves available to, to Mr. D'Arenzo at his convenience. Meet him out there and share everything with him. And just real brief, we actually got a finished hydrogeologist report from WSP today, which will be submitted to the commission tomorrow, and we'll include that to Russ and the intervenor and everyone else.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then the last, the last item to fill in would be the scope of work is authorized, shall not exceed. I don't have the amount of the, the proposal there. Do you guys have your?
Ninety-five hundred.
Ninety-five hundred.
Okay, again, I'm going to modify my motion to include the Arcadis, the $9,500 lump sum fee not to exceed the November 18th and
November 12th.
And as, as defined on their proposal dated.
Commissioner Stewart, just say November 12th.
October 6th.
Yep, okay. We have, we have this, hold on, Loz, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, there's, there's an error in there. According to our regs, the applicant does not pay the consultant. The applicant pays the town. The town pays the consultant. If you look at Schedule A under our additional fees under section 19 of our, of P-section on the regulations, it says that said fees will be established by the commission and/or its agent based on preliminary estimates from such professionals, and said estimates of fees times 150% will be paid to the town by the applicant. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we have to keep it regula aboveboard.
All right. So can we vote on that motion now?
With that, with that amendment.
With the change, with the change.
Okay, by fourth modification of the motion, the applicant will pay the town at 150%. The remaining balance will be refunded to the applicant once the project is complete. The applicant will pay the town prior to the closing of the public hearing. Is that acceptable, Russ D'Enzo?
It is to me, yep.
All right, so we have a motion, an amended motion by Commissioner Stewart, seconded by Commissioner Hall. All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're all right, so what I'm gonna try to do, I'm gonna pick up on the agenda, so there's other people that have been ignored this evening. What am I gonna do with it? All right, so, and that would be 556 Pepper Street. Mr. Rios is still here. Thought I saw him re-enter.
Uh, yeah, I see him.
Well, I saw his name down there.
Yep.
Rios. Please unmute yourself and speak. All right, we're gonna have to move it. Either you see 2020 dash 05, 195, 201, and 211 Main Street, proposed three-story senior housing, paved interest, parking patio, greeting landscaping, Mutual Housing Association of Southwest Connecticut, EBA, Connecticut Housing Partners. Apple, this is the table next to me. Okay, that's good. Did the hearing, NOV discussions? Want to start that? We've got enough time to do that in 24 minutes, please, do you think? Or we start it?
I think we could probably start it.
All right, let's go. IWV, so are they all, do we do them all?
You, you just cut out on me, Keith.
Do we do them all together or separately?
Well, I know that the attorney for 1380 is online, and the attorney for 1366 and 43 Birdseye is online because 43 Birdseye, the, he got permission from that attorney to talk about those two, so.
Let's go down the line then. IWV dash 2019 dash 15, 13A Monroe Turnpike disturbance within upland view area.
Hi, I'm Attorney Laurel Fedor representing the estate of John J. Stofian with regard to this wetlands violation. We are working on resolving this in various ways. I spoke with Jason Spath with the Huntington Company, and one of the questions, we have a couple of questions. The first question is, will you need a full existing survey? Hello? Oh, you're over there.
What have we done in the past? Denise, you're our ship.
What we have, the, the information we have is our current GIS. I don't believe we have an actual, you know, an up-to-date A2-type survey.
Talking about existing conditions.
She's talking about existing conditions, if I'm not mistaken.
We feel.
So the information we have is based on records that have been generated, you know, in, in our files. So anything to do with the property line and where the wetlands appears to be.
Mr. Chairman. So this is, this is a question to the commission, so let's, let's just ask, what are your thoughts? Commissioner Spence, we'll start with you. Hold on. I'm trying, I'm trying to work through this, trying to work through this as quickly as possible so we can get everything in tonight, so.
I am involved in this, Mr. Chairman.
He's.
My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer that represents Frank Schrodel. It's my position that Mr. Schrodel owns the property that is the subject of the 1380 violation. Attorney Fedor disagrees with me. That issue of who is in control of the property is going to be resolved by the probate court. The resolution of the violations is quite simple. I have spoken to Denise at length about it as I have regarding 1366 and 43 Birdseye, and all three violations can be resolved quite easily. However, we're going to have to go to probate court because Attorney Fedor and I do not agree as to who's the owner of the property. So before we go ordering any surveys and the, the expensive money, I think we need to resolve the issue of whether my client is going to be responsible for the remediation, or whether attorney Fedor's client is going to be responsible for the remediation.
So that's, so that's, so Mr. Knott, that is something you're saying you're going to court to get the.
Probate, Trumbull Probate Court, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that means, are you saying, are you, are you saying that we cannot, we can't resolve this NOV until you're done at court?
You can resolve 43 and 1366. We cannot resolve 1380.
Well, if I may say, I mean, we can take steps to do that. I think we should.
Please, as you, as you speak again, just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. My name's Attorney Laurel Fedor, and I believe that, you know, we have a conflict as far as they're saying that they own it. The estate currently owns the property. I believe we should start taking steps to resolve the problem, and that's why I'm asking what steps that the commission would like us to take. For example, when I spoke to Jason Spath at Huntington Company.
Let me cut you off, or I'm gonna go right back to your original request.
Yes.
Let's make commissioners, one at a time, if they want the existing conditions survey, A2 survey, or is that correct, A2? All right, Commissioner Spence? All right, Commissioner Spence, you wanna see an existing condition survey?
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard, please? This is a thirty-two acre.
Trying to do something, Mr. Knott, please, I'm trying to do something. We've got tw- nineteen minutes, okay? So please let me complete my, what I'm trying to do. Commissioner Gingrich, you wanna see an existing condition survey?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know what the problem is.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall, would you like to see existing condition survey? Thank you. Commissioner Stewart, same question.
Of course.
Of course. Commissioner Masaraco?
Of course.
Okay. Laurel, we'll need to see an existing condition survey and move forward.
Okay, all right, that's my first.
Regarding that issue, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Knott, until I'm done with Laurel, please, Donna.
Okay, next question. Um, he also wanted to know if you would, you would prefer a formal plan or a informal walkthrough to determine what needs to be done?
Uh, typically, what we're gonna request is that they make some type of proposal to us. We haven't seen any map of of existing conditions, so I don't think so. And we can't make that determination until we know what we have in front of us. So I think we start with the survey now. And when you present us with the survey, if you want to present a solution to the problem at the same time, it saves time, that's completely up to you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
All right, thank you.
And and let me ask you one more question?
Yes.
How much, how fast we have to have this survey done?
Uh, I guess that would be, Denise, how, what's your timeframe?
Well, the commission typically makes the timeframe.
Oh, I mean, so we have a, we have a notice of violation. Don't we usually give people a certain amount of time?
Because this was in probate, and we're trying to keep the three properties together, we've been pushing it. So, I mean, the NOV was sent out originally March. March of this, yeah.
Well, Laurel, Laurel, I guess, you know, we previously discussed in tonight's meeting, we only have this. Where, where do you feel, we only have two more meetings till the end of the year.
How about December ninth? If, and if I have something ahead of time, I'll communicate with um Denise Halsted.
Okay, a quick thumbs up from the commissioner, December.
Tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry, Denise.
It's okay. Um, looking through the file, just so we know, there is um, there is a plan that it looks like Huntington had done a survey locating the wetlands. Um, I'm looking at a plan that says site plan prepared for State John Stofan, um, prepared by the Huntington Group, and it looks like there may already be an A-two survey that was done.
All right, well, Denise, it's up to Attorney Fedor.
It might be something that might exist, so.
Thank you. Just to move it along, uh Attorney Fedor will have to find whatever paperwork they need. If it exists, good for them because they'll get it faster. So, uh, thank you. We're gonna move along so we can finish up this thing. Uh, it doesn't make it sixteen, you can unmute Mr. Knott, the client forty-three Birdseye Drive, service to the upland interview area. Knott, state your name, please.
Barry Knott, I'm the attorney for uh the owner of thirteen sixty-six Monroe Turnpike. That violation has already been resolved through an application by my company uh that has been approved by the commission. Uh, Denise is in possession of that approval. It was approved as a right, as this was a farm property. With respect to the violation at forty-three Birdseye Street, uh Birdseye Drive, excuse me, that uh property is represented by, property owner is represented by Attorney Tom Lynch. He is at another hearing this evening. I spoke to him today because his client's interest and my client's interest in resolving the violations with respect to forty-three Birdseye are the same, and Mr. Lynch and I have agreed to represent to you that he and I will be working together to resolve the violations with respect to forty-three Birdseye. And then just uh for the record, I still take the position that I represent the owner of thirteen eighty Monroe Turnpike, and I object to uh the the order that was issued by the commission with respect to providing uh the documentation requested by Attorney Fedor. My client owns the property, her client doesn't.
Keith, you're, you're muted yourself. Keith, you're muted.
Ooh.
The Great Danes were parking, so I'm muted. I'm sorry. Um, all right, I don't know if we have anything to really respond to that. If they're gonna provide an AQ survey, we're gonna provide an AQ survey. It's a piece of documentation. If they have a right to to bet it to us, then we're gonna take it. Um, now, wanna comment anything about the next one? IWV two thousand fourteen dash twenty-six, thirteen sixty-six Monroe Turnpike, armed community farming activities?
That permit has already been issued by the commission, Mr. Chairman.
That one has been resolved, yes.
Oh, so we're gonna have to discuss that tonight?
No, but it was, it was, it was because of the interrelation of all the parcels.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna, we're gonna wait on survey, and um you're also waiting for some kind of uh court work, correct, Mr. Knott?
With respect to thirteen eighty, with respect to forty-three Birdseye, Attorney Lynch and I are gonna work with Denise to resolve the outstanding issues regarding that notice of violation.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go back because I think I see Mr. Rios re-entered the meeting. Are you here?
Thank you. Good evening, committee.
Yes, um, Mr. Rios, we're going back to your application, IWG point point dash zero four five five six Pepper Street. We are gonna be done promptly in twelve minutes, so please be as quick as possible.
I will. Um, good eve- good evening, committee. Is this is in regard my application for my uh parking, um, all right? And I'll getting back to the commission, I just, um, I have to, how I said early this evening, I have to apologize with the committee because I submitted those uh drawing late, um, just early this morning, and uh via email yesterday, and the actual uh drawings early this morning. Uh, it shows all of the comments and changes that in the last meeting, the committee has been asking me to do the changes. Um, actually, my engineer made those changes. And what I intended to do is, tonight is for the committee to approve this drawing or to review and approve.
Don't have the drawing, correct? I printed it off from my email just now. No, prior to the meeting.
It was sent last night.
Yeah, so there's a planting list involved now around the rain garden.
That's correct.
We didn't have any type of planting list. Okay, Commissioner Gingrich, can you hold on for a second? All right, my mother, has it, has all the other commissioners, I'm sorry, I haven't seen it. Has uh everybody else seen this? No. Commissioner Spence, you've not seen it?
I just got it. I, it was, it was not, didn't show up in my inbox for a while.
And and quick, in a quick, quick, this is an acceptable plan by anybody that's seen it?
Yeah, I I accept it.
You accept it? Commissioner Hall, have you seen it?
I have seen it and I accept it.
Okay, Commissioner Stewart, have you seen it?
I saw it, but I didn't look at it.
Okay, did you say anything, jump out at anybody that would be a concern? Because maybe we can move this along and get it done for. Commissioner Masaraco?
Well, what plants are on the list?
Okay, the specification of the plant, it's gonna be pruned.
Um, hold on, let's see if you can, let's see if you can answer this question faster.
Yeah, I have a list, uh, on the drawing, there is a list of plants.
Mr. Rios, please hold on for a second. Denise?
Sure.
Yes.
Does the plant list conform with acceptable plants um in our regulations?
Well, all it says is, it tells you a plant type and says a number. There's no location shown, there's no um sizing typically put. I mean, if if you accept this, there's a lot of conditions that have to be uh placed on it because there's still, in my mind, there's still some things missing. And other staff has not had a chance to review this yet because of not coming in yet.
Short notes. All right, so then, let's say we're gonna have some questions that need to be answered, um, mostly coming from staff, correct? Denise, do you wanna state those to the applicant? So that he knows how to make.
Well, the, let me tell you, our engineer hasn't had a chance to review it yet because we got the hard copy today.
Okay.
So with our email being down, so.
So we really can't move this along then? Is that?
I, I really feel we need to postpone it to the next meeting, which I had kinda put a memo together saying that the fact that staff hadn't had the opportunity to fully review it, we should push it off.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rios, you understand uh what's happening?
Um, we mentioned the list of the plant for the rain garden.
Well, staff is gonna, I think. Respond to Mr. Rios with, with what things are insufficient, correct?
Correct. I'm more concerned, I'm more concerned about the rain garden and its function because it hasn't been reviewed yet.
Yeah, we haven't had, it's you, there's not enough time for, to get through all the people that need to to review it, Mr. Rios. Um, but we're very hopeful we can get this completed for you in our November meeting.
Yes, I'll make sure.
That will be wonderful.
We have everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, committee. Good night.
Move very long. So there's only one other thing I think that's worth mentioning, uh, is Gaybauer Road, IA two thousand tw- twenty twenty dash twenty-four.
That was an I A A, um, if you remember last week, um, that we had it as an NOV, an old NOV, and I was trying to push it to citation, and I got, I was contacted via email that night about taking care of this, and we've been working, getting, moving forward as the IA to get this addressed.
Okay.
So.
Um, well, I'll just go real quick because we're so close. Uh, deliberations, category nothing. Uh, thirteen permitted use as a right IP. Maintenance, either regulation four point two C, expiration three point eight two thousand twenty-three. Forcement deliberation, nothing. Minutes. Let's try to get this.
You know I have changes. Um, what I can do is, um, I'll, I can read them very quickly, and I will work with Donna and get them to her so that she can get them into, out of.
Nothing to do is, nothing you could do is, you could, Lois, you could also send an email to Donna, have her fix the minutes, and we could approve it at the.
Sounds perfect. I will do that.
Okay, uh, regulation, remember, committee? Hold on, hey. Correspondents, no. I make them move into the meeting the second. I guess my Commissioner Gingrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting closes nine twenty-five. I saw by five minutes.
Congratulations.
You got it done. Thank you all.